I'd like to call this meeting to order. All those who are able, please stand. A pledge of allegiance will be offered. We have our leaders tonight coming from Meadowview. Principal Madison said Meadowview 5th grade students Olivia Johnson and Matthew Jacecki were chosen to represent Meadowview because of their willingness to learn, their leadership skills, and for being positive role models to their classmates and the younger Hawks at Meadowview. Every morning, we have heard, well, after doing morning announcements, the entire school chants "All Hawks soar to success." Is that right? There is no doubt that these Hawks have a bright future ahead of them. Would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Olivia, and thank you, Matthew. Are we in compliance with open meeting law notifications?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's do a roll call to verify our quorum.
Commissioner Nordin.
Here.
Commissioner Becca.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Here.
Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
We have a quorum. Tonight, despite the list was available, there is no citizens that registered for the public speaking part, so we'll skip that part for tonight. Our next point in the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to review the upcoming events for the school board. All of the meetings that are listed will be held at the administration building unless otherwise stated. There is a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Meadowview's secure entrance at 8:30 a.m. on November 19th. That will be followed at 4:30 by a meeting of the Eau Claire Virtual School Board. On November 26th at 1:00 p.m., there is a Budget Development Committee meeting. On December 2nd, there is a Policy and Governance meeting at 8:00 a.m. And at 10:00 a.m., there is a meeting from Representative Petrick, who will do a tour of Prairie Ridge, and school board members are invited to attend that. That will take place at 10:00 a.m. at Prairie Ridge. And then on December 2nd at 7:00 p.m., there is a meeting of the school board. So tonight, I am very proud to recognize five students from Memorial High School who were selected to be part of the 2019 Macy's Great American Marching Band and will march in the 93rd Annual Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. The students are Julia Nick. Julia, are you here? Yes. Would you stand, please?
Yes.
Okay. Cole Picor. Maria Cristiani. Sophia Konzen. And Joe Dasher. These five students will participate in a marching band of 185 students from across the country in front of 3 million live spectators and over 50 million viewers on TV. Somebody get nervous. I want to also recognize their band director from Memorial, Eric Dasher, for his outstanding work and inspiring his students to achieve this honor. And so we want to congratulate you all, and I know you're going to represent your school and the district well at the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. So, thank you. So, this week is American Education Week, which is an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who make a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. Therefore, I want to say thank you to everyone who supports our ECASD students. I want to also thank the families, our teachers, our staff, our school board, our community, and our partner organizations. We are proud of the education that our students receive in the Eau Claire Area School District, but we know that we don't do it alone. And so it takes a great deal of coordinated effort to educate a child, and we are thankful for all the support we have in ensuring that every child is prepared for post-secondary success, and we appreciate all of the efforts of all of the people who contribute to that success. So, thank you. And if you see an educator this week, congratulate them and thank them. The Family Advisory Council met on November 5th. Commissioner Becca was present to seek input on the superintendent's search from the FAC as well as answer questions. Commissioner Becca indicated that meetings with staff and community are nearing an end, and they will have a job description profile finalized in the coming weeks with a plan to post the superintendent position sometime this month. I shared an update with the Family Advisory Council about the potential donation of solar panels. There are many details to work out, but the proposition is very exciting and aligns with the school board's recently passed resolution regarding sustainability and carbon neutrality. So, the next meeting for FAC is Tuesday, December 3rd at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hardwick. The next point in the agenda is the president's report. I would just like to highlight that we are moving forward in our process, planned process, to initiate the superintendent's search. There are just a few meetings to be completed for the input part, and we continue to be very excited about it. Next, I had the opportunity last week to attend the latest International Association for Inter-Cultural Education in Amsterdam, where I presented a paper on research, and I was really impressed by the event was held at a public school while the school was in session. And I was impressed by the level of, not just organization, but a level of participation the students themselves had in the conference. They attended sessions, but also were in charge of the whole logistical part of hosting an event, an international event. And I dreamed that we could someday do that here in Eau Claire. I think it's very doable. So, I have some ideas to share with you later. That will be my report for tonight. Let's keep it short. The next item is Student Representative Report. Morgan Prem.
Hello. This past two weeks, sports, state swim and dive. Several individuals from Memorial girls' swim and dive team qualified and competed at state last weekend. They were able to take home two top-15 and two top-20 individual finishes in various events at the state competition. The boys soccer team competed at state as well. They lost forward one to Nina in the state semifinal match. This marks, as well, the start of winter sports. This includes wrestling, boys and girls basketball, dance, gymnastics, boys swim and dive, and boys and girls hockey. So, lots of sporting events coming up. Memorial's musical "Shrek" was performed last weekend. This performance raised money for Memorial's theater program through ticket sales as well as a celebratory dinner prior to the show on Saturday evening. Late last week, many students from Memorial's business classes, including personal finance, accounting, and marketing, were able to attend Real Life Academy at the Lismore Hotel here in downtown Eau Claire. Students were given a background, including age, occupation, financial status, and relationship and family statuses. They were then able to interact with various booths and make different financial decisions, really like a large, real-life version of the game of life. And this gives them insight into real-life decisions and planning and provides them with skills for their future. I'd also like to highlight various community connections that Memorial has made in the past two weeks. Mrs. Moss and Mr. Rails' 9th grade U.S. history classes connected with community members to discuss the 1950s. They were able to bring in different community members who talked to students about their experiences living through the 1950s. Memorial High School also recognized Veterans Day with a program featuring students from band and choir. The program honored both past and present veterans and was led by Memorial students who have made a commitment to serve their country in the future. Finally, the Culinary Arts II class has partnered with ZA51 to develop a recipe for the December pizza for a cause. The students worked with a group to create a recipe. They then tested that recipe and were judged. So, I invite you guys all to stop by ZA51 and taste their creation. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you very much, Morgan. Our next point in the agenda is School Board Committee Reports. Let's begin with LEAP Committee.
LEAP met last Tuesday. We had put a call out for new members, for staff and community, and I think you have the applications and are going forward with those, so we look forward to your selections and welcoming our new members. We had a discussion about, now that we have our, sort of our policy and our rules in place, how do we get the word out to the staff? And we had a discussion about the best methods for doing that and moving forward so that the staff understands the program and knows what to expect, et cetera. And then we also decided that, given that timeline, we probably weren't going to meet in December, so we'll pick it up again in January. And that's the LEAP Committee.
Thank you very much. Budget?
Well, I'll forego it. I think we have a lot of budget topics tonight, so we did meet, and we'll meet again in a week.
What am I missing? Demo and Trends.
So, embedded in some of the budget discussion that we'll have tonight is revisiting of the tasks that Demo and Trends has proposed to take on, looking at Southside Expansion. I anticipate that, once we give them go-ahead tonight to start doing that work, that they will be meeting in December. Am I wrong on that? Like, December is our next planned meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Policy and Governance met this morning, and we are working on drafting new policy in regards to board committees and charter schools and other projects. So, we'll be ready to present to the full board consideration a couple items after our next meeting. Is that all? Yes? Thank you. Now, we'll go with legislative update. Dr. Nordin?
None tonight.
Thank you. Our next point in the agenda is the Consent Resolution Agenda. We will consider approval of the Consent Resolution Agenda items. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. This will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. The items are Minutes of November 4th, 2019, Minutes of Closed Session, November 4th, 2019, Financial Report, October 2019, Gifts in the Amount of $12,476.16 for the period of October 1st, 2019 through October 31st, 2019, Payment of All Deals in the Amount of $5,444,792.46, and Net Payroll in the Amount of $3,722,758.28 for the period of October 1st, 2019 through October 31st, 2019. And lastly, Human Resources Employment Report. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Resolution Agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion moved by Commissioner Klinkhammer. And a second?
Second.
This is a roll call to approve the Consent Agenda.
Commissioner Nordin?
Yes.
Commissioner Becca?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes. The Consent Resolution Agenda has been approved. At this point, we will adjourn to work session. As you know, we had been, we decided to separate this, the time during this session to have an opportunity to discuss more in detail about important issues that we cannot, we could not exhaust in just one hour or two-hour session. So, that's why we decided to meet earlier in the hopes that we have enough time to, as I said, begin these conversations. The items that we have to discuss tonight are related to our budget, in the first place. The second item, connected to the budget, but more in a structural way, we will discuss about a policy for our fund balance. The third point also will be our need for long-range planning for the life of our district. And finally, we will invest some time to discuss elements related to the presentation we had four weeks ago about coherent governance model and see what we want to do with that information and how we will move forward with it. So, let's get started. Yes? So, budget. Commissioner Harder.
Thank you. And apologies in advance, I seem to come down with a cold in the last 24 hours, but I'll try to just muddle through it here. And I want to just give this a test here, make sure it works, because we haven't tried it yet. No go. The brown one, not doing anything.
It's, it works. It's about, yeah.
Yes, this one.
It should be that one. It works.
Okay. Maybe this keyboard? Should I go up there? So, yeah, this is just a few slides. I don't think it'll take more than 10 minutes or so for me to go through it. I just, it's a big-ish topic, as we know. There's quite a few things on the burner right now, so I just wanted to try to help organize the thoughts a little bit. It attempts to be comprehensive. I know that it fails in several respects, but we'll muddle through it. So, it's really just talking about, first of all, just sort of framing the purpose of the Budget Development Committee work, and just a little quote here of the board and district committee's Policy 182. The purpose of the Budget Committee should be to facilitate the development of the annual school district budget by conveying school board objectives to administration, reporting on the budget development progress, and raising issues to the full school board when necessary. And it talks about committee manhoodship as well. So, within that, I have my own kind of take on it, I guess, as chairing this committee, which is how I try to interpret that at the moment especially. It's looking at, this is a little table here I put together today just to sort of lay out some thoughts on what I think are impactful budget actions that this board might take, especially in the coming year. Now, you may be able to think of others. I think this is actually true almost regardless of the year, but as the chair, this is a lens that I use to look at our work, and I wanted to share it with you, just so you can at least understand my perspective a little better. I think the overarching thing I want to say, just to go back to this, I see this work of the BDC as a, it's part of the service that we do here as board members, and this is a subset of the service that we do. And I see it as serving the board to try to help the board in decision-making, whatever that may mean. And that may change depending on the situation, but I think these are key areas where I see the board needing to make decisions on occasion and how the BDC might help, from my perspective. So, a big example of an impactful budget action that's sort of, we'll be talking about tonight in more detail, is a call for a referendum. And then, on the right-hand side, how can BDC help? Well, referendum planning, just making sure the question is getting raised at an appropriate Then, a second item, just simply approving, cutting, and spending of various types. These are facility planning, programming, supplies. We went through several of these when we found to our pleasure that we had a budget surplus. Well, we had some spending choices to make. Those went quite quickly. It was very easy to do. But that's an example of just sort of, the board had asked the BDC to assist with some recommendations and that. Happy to do that, certainly as chair, and to help do that kind of work. More, sort of more foundationally, this third item is a notion of restructuring staff, and the fourth item, a notion of restructuring programming. So, those two items are sort of bigger picture, kind of macro considerations. And on the right-hand side, this is the way I see this right now, is, is it even needed? Don't know. But is it something we should be considering? I feel it is. And I feel it's something that we should, again, these are, on the right are sort of my personal take on it as a starting point for the conversation, is that the BDC should convene one or more staff budget committees for input on savings and revenue ideas that the Budget Development Committee is currently working on. So, we're not only developing those ideas, but that we should work with staff, work with, whether that's downtown staff or staff throughout the whole district, to help sort of vet those ideas. I think we have a unique opportunity in this year to do that, because we have a surplus, we have a moment to sort of look at the bigger picture and put it into the larger context. Same, sort of same idea on the question of programming. This one hasn't felt as immediately pressing as others on the list right now, but virtual school is an example of something that would be new programming designed to bring more people into the district, more students into the district, and to attract enrollment, Note there, I'm very open on any of these, actually, where we go, but I wanted to just kind of give you my starting point perspective. And finally, lobbying Madison for more funding is a good example of something the board can do. I put it low on this list only because, as far as BDC goes, I have not prioritized it. It's, I think it's important work to do, but I feel like BDC is a little bit more focused on some of the more practical, immediate aspects that are unique to our district. So, that's just kind of, this is just sort of this lens. Again, it's not super comprehensive, but it's fairly comprehensive of some key issues and sort of how I'm approaching it from the chair perspective. And so, I just wanted then to just take a couple minutes to pull out some key issues that I think are worth talking about here, that we've been talking about within the BDC and within the whole board. They are, oh, sorry, there we are. We've got OPEB, we've got the Gap Group. There's budget planning, there's referendum, and then there's a question of others. And there are certainly others, and this is my, you know, sort of quick list of top-level items. You might, someone might put facilities on there. We know Demo and Trends, that's a big issue. Certainly, the fund balance policy, which we'll be talking about tonight, that's a big issue. Some of those, I group under budget planning. So, but I wanted to just talk through a few ideas on these points for just a minute. So, we've got OPEB, and I think really the key question with OPEB is how much is an appropriate amount of financial burden to shift from the district budget to staff who are currently working under the pre-2008 OPEB plan? And that's really the, I think, the crux of the question. The amounts that we previously targeted to shift failed to win the support of the board last time we tried. My personal opinion is that we should do a sort of a larger study, this step-back study of key budget questions throughout the coming year. Once that work is complete, we'll have a better context and understanding through things like the fund balance policy that we come up with, whatever it may be, and through looking at other opportunities for cost savings and for revenue, and trying to put that into a perspective of things we can do, things we should do. But OPEB is one of those things, and all of them will probably involve some kind of trade-off. OPEB provides, has a particular trade-off of shifting this burden. And what is, if and when we decide to do it, we're ultimately going to need to decide what is that correct target number to shift. A next item is Gap Group. We have a board decision on a particular group of staff who've identified their concerns with some real precision. We know there's a larger group of staff who also consider themselves part of that gap group, but don't fit that criteria. I think we need board decisions on both of these things. I personally think we need board decisions on both of these things, kind of simultaneously with each other, and fairly soon. I put in a calendar here, this is a sample of a notion of how we might approach it, but I think we need to start getting a little bit more concrete about this, and I know the board is working on that work right now. That takes us to budget planning, which is, for me, an important, really important piece. It's kind of, it ties together a lot of the elements, particularly the referendum piece, because what I'm hoping to do is, in this next year, is to help all board members get comfortable, a comfortable grasp on the budget work that's, that we do every year, and the story of how we got to where we are this year, and as clear a picture as we can provide of what we anticipate will be coming. I don't think it has to be terribly deep, but I think there's, there, I know that I have areas of confusion that we could be clarified with some discussion, I think. have areas of confusion that we could be clarified with some discussion, I think. And I think it would provide, as we talk about budget planning, as I mentioned before, the notion of bringing in staff budget committees. It provides a valuable, as it says here, maybe necessary foundation for the referendum initiative to succeed, based on the premise that staff collaboration buy-in is our best path to community buy-in. And I happen to subscribe to that theory myself, but my hope is at the end of this year or so of study, and we can think about what that exact timeframe might be, but that the board will have developed a clear and principled set of positions on how we intend to prepare for future budget conditions. And to be able to articulate those, you know, at a level that we're comfortable with, whether we're talking to a community member, whether we're talking to a staff member, whether we're talking to a superintendent candidate, that we can talk with credibility and confidence at a level that, that makes sense for us. So, further on budget planning, at the moment, I was sort of working towards some kind of, in the interest of getting that picture clear, some kind of a data gathering, again, not deeply extensive, but going back five years, if it's not too onerous, maybe 10 years, to have a bit of a budget look back to understand, well, what's different about this year that led to a budget surplus, just so we're all clear, and we've got it down as sort of a single talking point that we all agree on, and to look a little bit at the trends, if there have been changes in terms of spending categories, breaking it down, expenses along a few different areas, but doing a year-over-year comparison. And so, we get, we get this in, in a number of ways with our budget projections and versions of this. What's a little different about this one is it includes actual spending as well as budgeted spending, because we have that data, having gone through the years, and it also goes year-over-year. It's a year-over-year look that's intended to be fairly comprehensive and encompassing. So, for me, as somebody doing work on this committee, I, I feel a little adrift without something of this nature to anchor our understanding and our discussion. So, that's, I think, what has motivated me to, to ask for it, and I wanted to raise that request to the level for board consideration to see if we agree this is worth pursuing, if not, maybe we look for something else. Similarly, there's, again, this calendar, I've tried to, you know, this is very rough, just did this today, sort of trying to, trying to visualize a, an example of how this work might unfold over time, and recognizing that there's a few different strands that will need to be held together, and just making sure, again, that, not that these timelines don't exist, but that they, they exist in a form that's absolutely accessible and understandable to all board members. Another topic, referendum, basically, will we or won't we, and if so, when? Keeping in mind that the referendum is, is a big boat, moves very slowly, as we'll see with some of the referendum timeline discussion that Dr. Hardback will provide for us tonight. We do have a 2020 debt drop-off, which leads to a fall in local state tax. It's a potential opportunity to, there's the potential for an opportunity to avoid that drop, and whether that's a, something we want to pursue or not is, I think, an important question for the board to answer soon, because we may have already really missed our timeframe to do anything for it, but I think, we owe it to the district from a budget perspective to just be sure, to just be sure that we've missed, if we've missed the boat for the 2020, to act on 2020, we know why, and we know that it's not something we need to worry about. If we haven't missed the boat, that we've talked about it, and we discuss, and we agree whether we should do anything at all. So, I think that's an important question. And again, the notion of district-wide staff involvement and buy-in for these referendum questions, I think is, I believe is very important. If the staff isn't, doesn't have buy-in to our plan, it's going to be much harder to sell to the community. So, that's really it. That's just a kind of a sweep of items that I think are important. I'm sure there will, there will be others that we can and should talk about, but those are, those are very top of mind for me as I think about the work that we're doing in BDC right now. And so, I wanted to put that framing out there to just give a sense of how I see it. Again, it's one person's perspective, and I'm very open to really, it's a, it's a question of service for, for the board here, and that's how I see my role as chair, is how can we serve the board best in its budget needs in the coming year and beyond, so. With that, I'm happy to open it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Harder. So, let's open up for discussion. Any questions? I think that all the items are tied to each other, so we can start anywhere and then see how we can connect the dots. Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Just one quick question for clarification. So, these staff budget committees, are these something that's in place now that you use, or are you saying, okay? So, then my question is-
What we have is, sorry, what we do have is the OPEB committee, and I think that's the model we've identified as something that we felt on BDC was very effective, very helpful, and so it was really looking at that model and extending it to a larger commentary on the, the work that I would like to bring up, actually. I could bring up our list of, it's a less, it's a little less organized, but to comment on that list, and, yeah.
So, I guess my question is how, I mean, presumably, we have actual staff, right, whose job it is to work on the budget and prepare these sorts of things. So, do you see this as an extension out into what I would think of as the certified teaching staff and drawing in people like that onto this committee? Or how is a staff budget committee different from our employees that work on the staff and do the budget?
Yeah. Obviously, our downtown team is staff as well, right? So, it's a little ambiguous in that regard, I apologize. But, yeah, it's about talking to, working under the assumption, which, you know, we have to test that assumption, but working under the assumption that the board and downtown staff can come to some agreement about what this picture looks like, and that what, how we intend to move forward, and in fact, I would say are moving forward. We can't afford to necessarily wait and sit. There are certain items on this list that I think can and should move forward without wider staff input. But there are other items, again, in the interest of, well, there's, I think there are a lot of benefits, and we could go into it, but of essentially getting that staff understanding, showing our work, helping them to, to understand and educate the wider staff who are collectively most impacted by, by changes like restructuring or OPEB changes or whatever they may be, to weigh in, give their perspective. And it's part of, it's part of that, that sort of macro look at where are we and where would we like to go next.
Can I follow? So, that's, so you see these staff budget committees then as more targeted to specific questions like, okay, we're developing this new program, this committee should meet to talk about this, not a general staff budget committee that's always weighing in on the budget every single year?
Yeah, no, I think it's, we have developed a list over the last month or so of, of work that we consider priorities on the board, and I, I don't know if I can, it's about the easiest way would be maybe put it up on the board. But basically, it's a, it's a, it's a list of, of what we see as priority topics. A lot of them are, are on here, some of them aren't, but it's also, we're looking at the key, a key piece, do you have?
That one.
Others?
Plus others?
Well, yeah, it's potential cost-saving measures. It's really under the budget planning piece, which is, well, what can we do as, as a, as a board? What could we potentially do to affect our budget situation? Again, it goes back to this, I think, this, this table at the beginning, which is, to me, our, our options are relatively limited in terms of what we can do. You know, you look at lobbying Madison, and then it's kind of, you know, we get immediate questions that are put in front of us for, for, for things that we, we need to make decisions on, things like uniforms and iPads, and, you know, that was a good example in, in a recent meeting that we've worked through. But beyond the, the sort of bigger picture of what is it we might not be talking about or thinking about? Is there anything? We might talk about it for, for three sessions and realize, you know what, we've gone through every idea there was, and they've all evaporated into nothing, and we really don't have any other ideas beyond what we've already talked about. But I think it's important to go through that process. I think we have a responsibility to go through that process. And I think the, I think the right way to go through the process, again, my personal opinion, is with staff involvement. I think it's a real opportunity to help the staff understand our budget situation more deeply, to understand how limited our options are, to understand what are the potential remedies we're looking at, and to solicit ideas if there may, who knows, there may be some brilliant idea out there that we haven't heard yet about, about how we might get out of this.
Are you through with your question? Thank you. So, I have a how-to question for the third item in that chart. We have a group that, with whom we have worked with the OPEB. Would that be the base of that restructuring? Would it be advisable to make it wider?
We could, we could-
How, how can we do it?
We could review that membership of that original OPEB committee. I think it's an interesting starting point, though, for what may be an initial look at this list, from which we can decide if we want further, you know, subgroup, a further subgroup to look at any particular item from this list or to refine it, but just a general overview look. I think we had a fairly representative group with that, with that OPEB committee.
It was. Thank you. So, my question for the board would be, do you feel comfortable with this approach? Can we give a green light to the sounds, I like the acronym, what is it, the BDC? To move forward with this modus operandi? Getting the staff opinions? Who will identify the staff? I'm asking the question. Commissioner Becker?
I don't have an answer to that, but I, I will say two things. When I looked at your information, I tried to think of it as, both as a budget development committee member. Did what you, is what you're saying, does it capture my experiences on that committee? And I will say yes, very much so, and I'm, I'm thankful for it. I'm very thankful for the time I know that you put into this. I also tried to look at it through the lens of this new possibility of coherent governance. And so, did it fit not only what we've done, but does it fit this possible future? And I say yes, it does. And I think one of my challenges for this is how do you, they talked about, how do you connect with the owners, you know, of your organization? And so, when you talk about really forefronting like staff committees, that's a major way that you do it, I think. And I know that I, what I gained from that OPEB committee was tremendous, and I don't think I could have made decisions without that input. So, I would say however, however the budget development makes a decision, I just want to say I really appreciate what you did, and I think it's the right way to go, yeah.
So, again, how do we identify the staff? Would that be a BDC responsibility?
I'd be happy for BDC to take on that responsibility, and I think if we did, my expectation is we would start with that OPEB staff and consider how it may need, that OPEB committee membership, and consider how it may need to change for the objectives of this staff budget committee.
How did, how did we form the OPEB committee?
Applications.
Applications?
Yeah.
So, will we follow the same process?
I wouldn't think so, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So, does, is it helpful? Did you, do you have some direction?
If that's enough for us to move forward on, then I'm, I'm very happy with that.
Great, thank you. So, any other connection that the board would make, would like to make? Yes, Commissioner Harder?
I could speak to, again, just briefly, to the, the notion of trying to, well, I'll put it up there, this, this budget planning, oops, it died. There it is. A kind of a budget look back as well as a, as a look forward, and to take a bit of time to just study. Now, I'm, I've, the sample here is one I've actually started, they're completely made-up numbers, please don't be alarmed by the numbers, but it's, it's a notion of, of just sort of trying to, I tried to convey it verbally in the, in the last budget meeting, and it was, I found it was more difficult to explain than I realized, but, so I thought I'd just take a stab at illustrating it, but it's basically this with a few more, you know, a few more points of data, but again, you see that sort of year-over-year look, and I, I feel it would be helpful for our work in terms of trying to lay a groundwork for referendum, in terms of trying to help explain our budget situation to all the stakeholders that we, that we answer to as board members.
Question, to make this projection of five to 10 years, the BDC will need to work with Abby, right? Abby Johnson?
Yeah, I think so. I think, because we have the budget projection numbers from past years. What I don't have, that I'm aware of, is actuals, but I may even have those, I just don't know. You could just point me to it, maybe I could plug them in here, but I don't want to add a huge ton of work. I would be grateful for any help that the staff can give in this effort, though.
Well, this is the district projection, so I think that we, we need to invest to have, you know, a good database and that can give us, you know, a more accurate projection.
Agreed, yeah.
What difficulties or challenges are there to have this projection done?
It's not a problem to do it, I think. 10 years ago, some of the accounting and some of the way that we report things were a little bit different, so the five-year is much easier to do.
Yes.
The 10-year, we can certainly get, but we might need to invest a little bit more time of analyzing it. So, we actually started some of the works, we've already got part of it ready, so it won't be a problem.
Great. And estimating time, when do you think you can have this?
I think, I think what we, one thing we need to do is just narrow down these sort of nuances that aren't expressed here, of just sort of some of these ratios, and again, I'm happy to bring it back to the board if they feel like, oh, yes, that would be helpful, or no, that would be not time well spent, but to kind of just get that sense of, here's the actual chart we're trying to produce, and let's get the numbers together and produce it. So, it may take one more iteration of that, just to kind of hone in on, okay, what are, what are the different facets that we want to tease out of this, of this look-back data?
Do you think that a month would be enough, or two months, or three months? Because I'm thinking that it would be wise for us to block time every so often so we can have time to have this, continue this conversation.
Yes, yeah.
Say, if we are now in November, how about we block time in early February to continue the conversation, and then, you know, every two months have time allotted to conven, to continue the conversation?
I think that's a good idea, and I, I hope that the next Budget Development Committee, if we get board approval to kind of pursue this, is on the 26th, and I would hope that we would be able to kind of have at least some recommendations in terms of those facets defined, and then hopefully it would be enough information to, to help Abby and her team figure out the timeframe needed.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Becker?
I want to say something else that I appreciate about what you've done, and I'm thinking about Commissioner Klinkhammer's comments, if I might know what, what concerns might be there, that I think what you're doing is you're creating a vision, it's a, it's a visionary piece that you're bringing to it, that will hopefully have us less, more macro, less micro. Like, if the concern is somehow this would draw us into the weeds, I think it's trying to do the opposite, actually. And so, I look for a day when we're not making decisions about iPads, you know, and that, that information, it's funneling through, and we're just up at the macro. I mean, that's my goal. I think, I believe it's your goal, too, and I think that's what you're doing.
Yeah, you read it very well. In fact, macro budget planning was my original title, title on this, so that's exactly the word I had in mind as well.
Any other questions about, question about budget? Are we good with this? Did you get enough? Did you get enough direction to move forward?
This is very helpful. This gives us a lot to chew on over the next while, and, yeah.
Fantastic. So we'll move to the next item, but if we see that there is another connection that we can make, we can go back to the budget. Is that okay? So the next item is fund balance policy. And we have Abby in this part leading us.
Can I do it from here?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you should have received some information tonight, when you came, that talked about fund balance information, there's a whole packet. So we had some discussions with policy and governance, as well as budget development, about our current fund balance policy, and do we want to make modifications to that? One of the tasks that I was given was to check with other districts, and what are their recommendations, and what does their fund balance look like, their policy? And so that first page is really a summary of the districts that responded to us, and how they recommended what to do with their fund balance, what they do with their fund balance policy, and what we might want to do with ours. I think overall, our fund balance policy is very good. I think the question that comes up is, do we need to say something about, we have to have a balanced budget when we come forward? Or do we want to set those thresholds in there of 20% of expenditures, our fund balance can't go below that? I know we talked with both groups, policy and governance, as well as budget development. So if we put that threshold in there, then what? What if we fall below? What does that look like? So in both groups, it was discussed that we needed to have a full board discussion to make a recommendation of, do we, number one, do we want to put a threshold in there? Or do we want to just do something else that outlines it? Many districts you'll see recommend not putting a threshold in there for the same reason that we're concerned about that, because what happens if you fall below? And so what does that look like? And so there is a couple of samples. I think our policy overall is pretty good. If the board desired to have something, not putting in a percent, but wanting to talk about a minimum level, WASBE does have a good sample of some language that could be put in to address if fund balance in the general fund is depleted below the minimum target established, here's what we would do if we wanted to move forward with that. I didn't print out that information, because I wanted to get a good feel from the full board first. What do you really want in the policy? There's some specific things that we need to have in the policy, which our current policy has, and that's just talking about what is the non-spendable fund balance? What's restricted fund balance? How do you get those things? What's the committed fund balance look like? And then what's assigned? And all of those things have a component of the board, and we talked about it with the sale of Little Red. Do we want to earmark that money to only be used for a specific purpose? That's where those categories of the fund balance comes in, and then it's a formal board vote to say, we're going to put this aside for this specific purpose. And so I think that part of our policy is very good. The bigger question is just, is there a threshold we want to put in or not? And so we can open it up for discussion for the board.
So we have two items, threshold or no threshold, and then special designated, specially designated funds.
Yeah, we already have the specially designated funds, and I think that's okay. I don't think we need to make any changes. I just wanted to make the board aware that we currently have that in our policy.
So threshold or no threshold? Sounds kind of Shakespearean here. Commissioner Harder?
Well, I do have an opinion on this one, in the sense of, it occurs to me it would be very valuable, and has occurred to me for a while, it would be very valuable from the perspective of answering questions like the one raised in the previous set of slides about, for example, OPEB. What is, what number, if we're going to shift a financial burden from district to staff, what is the right size of that number? Well, the thing that drives it is, and we wouldn't be talking about it, I don't think, if we didn't have, if we had no fund balance problem. It's the fund balance problem that drives that. And so, and so getting clear on that, on the nature of that problem, and the limits of that problem, I feel are fundamental to getting a solid anchor, foundation, foothold, what have you, for questions like OPEB.
So am I hearing that you would favor definition of a threshold?
I like it from that perspective. I understand the concerns, and I agree with the concerns. Because I, too, have trouble, you know, what happens if we, if we miss it? I don't know the answer to that.
Can I follow, I will follow up with a question then, to your idea. Would you favor a fixed number or a bracket?
Well, if we do either, I think the bracket would be preferable, given, you know, what we've heard from other districts, and given what we know about the ambiguity of, of missing a target. I'd be interested to know what kind of language we could put in that encourages the board strongly towards certain targets without demanding them. I don't even know if that makes sense from a policy perspective, but it's a question I have.
Thank you. Any commentaries or questions? Commissioner Klinkhammer?
I appreciate the thought about, okay, if we set a threshold, then it helps us answer questions like OPEB. But I think if you can't answer the question of what happens if we go below it, then I think there's no point in setting a threshold, right? Because then it becomes like, well, okay, if you're, if there aren't any, and I'll just use it, if there's no consequences, what's the point, right? Why do you set up a rule if there's no consequence to not following the rule? You might as well leave it open and nebulous, and have the ability to adapt to situations versus locking yourself into a number. And to me, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to say, okay, we're going to say, I mean, we've always got a target bracket. I mean, whether or not it's actually written into the policy, sort of the, I'm going to use accountant for a better lack of the word that I'm thinking of, but the accountant says, we want you to stay here. This is, you know? So we already have a bracket that we shoot for. I don't know why we would lock ourselves in, given the unpredictable nature of our funding, given the unpredictable nature of what's going on. It just doesn't make any sense to me at all. But I appreciate why you're, why you're thinking about it.
Any ideas?
Yes, Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I mean, I do agree, and I raise, yeah, I raise the same question for the same reason. What is the point of having a policy if there's no teeth behind it? I very much agree with that, that point. I think whether it's defined as, as policy, or whether it's defined as something that is a stated objective of, for example, as committee, as Budget Development Committee work unfolds, that's one of the underlying principles, is we aim, we would love to have a 25, we know 25%, let's say, is, is an ideal target for us. And that's part of our objective, is to work towards that. Even that is fine. But I think realistic, 25% wouldn't be a realistic objective for our two- to three-year timeframe, I don't think. Maybe it is. But it's coming up with, what, what is that realistic objective? Is it worth setting and worth keeping our eye on?
What I, what I remember is many times, Abby Johnson, when she works with numbers, she says, well, this is the, the number that we don't want to reach, or the percentage that we don't want to reach. So it's actually a practice, right? And we all know that we have a practice. We don't have a, a policy that establishes that as a threshold, but it's a good practice, right? Would the board members prefer to continue with the practice as it is right now? Yes or no? Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Dr. Beke?
I, I too agree with the perspective of avoiding a policy about threshold, thresholds or ranges. I really appreciate the information from Sturgeon Bay. Because I was thinking about, although I, not thinking about thresholds, but more of guiding principles, one of theirs, avoid short-term borrowing, wasn't met. And so even the, that, that idea of guiding principles is problematic, you know? So I, I would agree with continuing with the current practice.
Thank you. And I assume that Commissioner Klinkhammer is also, well, not assume, I heard you were of the opinion of continuing with the practice.
I'm, I'm definitely okay with that. And, you know, may, as part of our work, sort of try to define some targets, or just define some objectives, so that we can communicate to that, that to the board, and, and hopefully get, get board at least understanding, and buy in on, on those targets. I think it's a, it's a helpful basis for us making some decisions when it, when it comes to cut versus not, to look at it in the big picture and say, well, what's our big-picture target? So I'll probably be trying, trying to form something like that. And if, if we do, I will certainly make sure that we communicate it back to the board and try to get it, some thumbs up or thumbs down on the notion.
Thank you very much. Do you feel the conversation has been exhausted? Yes? Okay, then. A point connected to that is that of the designated funds. We didn't get a chance to decide how to, or if we were going to earmark the proceedings from the sale of Little Red. So I think that we need to, it would be a good opportunity tonight to consider that. In the, the context of the, the sale of the building of Little Red, was that it was a good opportunity for us to turn into cash the value of a property, with the idea that, that income would, that conversion into cash would be used to be applied to growth. Now, is that what you would like to sort of confirm tonight? How would you like, in what terms would you like to earmark that? Growth, physical growth, physical growth in a certain area? What is your pleasure? Dr. Nordean?
So I have a question, really, is that beforehand. Is that money even still available? Or it wasn't, my understanding, and I hope that I'm wrong, but my understanding was that was part of what gave us the surplus at the end of last year. And so if that's the case, I think we may have already spent it. Like I said, I'm probably, I'm hopeful that I'm wrong.
So it is part of the surplus for the 1920 year? Because that sale happened in 1920. So right now, it's in our budget, is, as a revenue item. And so at any point in time, the board could decide that they are going to formally restrict those funds, and it would take a board motion to do that, based upon the discussion tonight. And then it would show separately in our financial statements.
Yeah, so that was off on the year, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Dr. Beke?
So I, I would like us to consider not earmarking. And I think about when so much about budgets is already restricted, why add more restrictions? I think we're already limited by type of fund, and how, how things can be spent, that leave it open to the next, you know, to the future to decide how, and growth can take many forms. And so leave it open to, to others in the future to decide what form.
Any other idea?
Abby, can you remind me, I'm trying to dig back from one of your presentations, what the actual surplus is for 1920, projected?
Hundred and 10,000-ish.
So in fact, if we were to designate the 620,000, I think that we got for Little Red, that would actually put us into the red for the year? Or operations-wise, because that money would be locked somewhere else? Or I don't?
How does that all work? Yeah.
Yeah, the implication at least, is that we are then?
Right. So we would still have, it's, so the revenue is part of the 110,000 that we are projecting. And so what this is doing is placing a restriction on the fund balance piece of it. So even though we may still end the year, in a perfect world, at $110,000, that would go to our fund balance. But what would happen is the total fund balance would increase by the 620, but we'd see an increase in a restricted or assigned, whichever category. So it's the categories. So in the big scheme of things, it's, the bottom line's still going to be the bottom line, it's just the fund, the net change in the fund balance could be different based upon the categories that are there that we report. You're welcome.
I have a question. What, financially speaking, what would put us in a better position? Having those funds designated or standing loose?
Sure. In, in the big financial picture, it's going to be the same, because the bottom dollar total will be the same. The difference is the classification. So I think it's really more about, does the board want to formally say, we're going to use those funds just specifically for growth? Or we're going to use it to offset business, business, I'm sorry, school district, you know, day-to-day operations? So I think that's really what it comes down to, because in the big scheme of things, that bottom fund balance number will be the same, it's just the categories in between may look different. Okay?
I'm thinking that if we're going to be talking about how will we respond to the growth needs in the South Side, in financial terms, and how much funding will we need to meet those needs? I think that we have, we would have at least two, maybe more than two, but I see two options. The first one is, we will need, say, 20 to the public. That will be, say, Plan A. And Plan B would be, we will need 20, but we already have six, if we designate those funds. So what do you think about that? Maybe there is a third or a fourth way to see in this, but we're talking about it. Yeah, Dr. Nordean?
So just to be clear, in using the, if we're saying we have six, what we will probably need, just from the preliminary work we've done with demographics and trends, to address South Side expansion, would not be 20, it would be 200.
I just said a number.
Sure. And so I just want to be, but I want to be clear, if we're going to talk about this, and we're going to talk about the referendum, which I didn't bring up in the first part, but I think my answer is categorically, yes, we need a referendum. But, so I, I'm not certain that the, like, 600,000, it certainly would help, but we're going to need to go, if we're just talking about update, like, capacity on the South Side, we're going to need something in the range of $20 million. That doesn't begin to address that now is when we need to do the deferred maintenance over at Roosevelt, since we've settled, you know, sort of the future look of that school. It doesn't address the facilities needs we have at, say, South, or, you know, a number of other schools. So I'm not certain that the, the 600,000 is as big of a selling point. You know, it certainly isn't nothing, but when we're talking about, you know, six out of 200, or six out of 600, it's less of something I think I'm worried that the community will grab on to as we have this little bit personally. So I think I agree with Commissioner Beke saying, we don't need to necessarily restrict ourselves, better to be more flexible with it.
Then perhaps we need to talk about the referendum and leave this one hanging? Okay? Then perhaps we need to talk about the referendum and leave this one hanging. Okay? So, and again, if we need to make a connection to the budget, then feel free to make the connection to the budget. Okay? So the third point of the agenda for tonight is the long-range planning. And I wanted to remind you of the ideas that I had shared with you before around the need to think about Eau Claire Area School District in the next ten years. Like, let's imagine Eau Claire Schools for 2030 and beyond. And that's quite a challenge because, as you know, the technology that will be used in five years has not been developed yet or put in the market yet. So it is a great challenge. But still, we need to imagine what is going to be the life of a school in ten-plus years. So the questions that I want you to consider are, how is Eau Claire Area School District going to respond to that new context, even though we don't know exactly how it will be shaped? What kind of educational services are we going to be providing for that new situation? What kind of infrastructure will we need? And most importantly, how are we going to make it happen? And I think that this is a conversation that needs to invite and involve as many members of our community as possible. Because we're talking about the educational future of the citizenry, and everyone's voice needs to be heard. So I would invite you to engage in this conversation. This would be the larger frame. And within that frame, one little piece, not little piece, one important piece, but not the whole piece, is the referendum. So we're talking about an envisioning program. How we will implement that, the referendum will help us, but the referendum per se is not the project. It will be the instrument to execute the project. So how about we spend a few minutes engaging these questions and then we'll go to talk more specifically about the referendum. Dr. Hardavick and the team have prepared different options in terms of timelines and important deadlines within those timelines to consider. Because as Commissioner Harder said, this is a big boat, and it moves very slowly. And if we have as much as possible forcing ahead of time, then it will be better for us. But I'd like to engage you in the conversation, in the larger conversation. How do you see the school and the services and the growth needs? Just dream. And the other executives also welcome to the conversation, of course. Yes, Commissioner Harder.
Well, I can say a couple of things. I think not only, as you say, this is a technology changing, but it's changing our whole society around us, and in particular, our workplace and our expectations for work in ways that are hard, I think will be hard to predict, but which I think may be quite consequential as we look at artificial intelligence replacing basic manual tasks with increasing frequency potentially, and computer systems changing what it means to have mastery of a subject to some degree. And along with that, I guess it's not a secret that I have a longstanding concern about, you know, just the engagement that, opportunities that we're providing for our students, and are they sort of as optimal as they can be. And I say that knowing how much time, effort, and care goes into that consideration at every level of the org chart in this district every day. It astounds me how much time and effort and care is put into those kinds of questions like student engagement. And as somebody who's a, this is not my vocation, I come to the board as a businessperson and as a parent with four children in the district, and I have some skin in the game in that regard. But I don't have a deep well of expertise that so many of you around me do, especially our staff. And so, but I do feel, I do have to say that I'm not sure we're optimizing. Have we reached the peak? And are we doing enough to try to find the peak of engagement for our students? And I'm concerned that the very important pursuit of higher achievement against the measures that we look at most closely, math and reading, the very important pursuit of achievement and closing achievement gaps and improving achievement along those measures, I'm concerned that the way that we're going about it is narrowing into those topics rather than broadening out to other topics to carry those concerns like basic reading skills along. So again, I'm not an expert in these things. I stumble around a little bit talking about it. But I do feel, I feel deeply about it as a parent. And I'm concerned about it as a school board member who I know this is, I don't know if we have a more important responsibility than the achievement of our students here in this district. That's what it's all about, so.
Thank you. Dr. Vika, you had your light on?
It's more of just, I guess, adding another question. Something that, when we've been out doing listening sessions for getting, you know, gathering input at this early phase on superintendent search, something that's a recurring theme, are people just asking and thinking about the identity of the district? You know, who are we? And so I really, again, I also really appreciate what you're doing with this agenda item, that it's, that you're, you know, like the budget, you're creating a vision. And I, I mean, it really clicked for me when you said, you know, the referendum, it's an instrument, it's one instrument, you know, that we'll use to make that vision possible. But I've been thinking a lot about these identity questions. And I think it feels to me, if I'm understanding what people are saying, that we're, you know, we're undergoing a, you know, we're in transition, there's a transformation that's happening, you know, what we're Eau Claire Schools like, what's our history, and what do we like about that history, and where are we headed? And people are, some people are maybe sure, I don't know, a lot of people are maybe unsure. But it's a question, you know, just a basic identity, and I don't know the answers yet. So that is a big part of what you've said to me.
Thank you. Any of the executives have any idea? Can you see the future? As a former teacher and school administrator, as a parent, as a board member, as a teacher, teaching teachers how to teach, I've had some ideas about these questions. And they have to do with the life of the school and who we are. I think it go, these ideas go in the line of how we are re-envisioning the work of the LEAP Committee, for example, and how we want to focus on the larger pictures rather than having to decide whether to buy ten or fifty iPads. I completely agree with that. So also, they go in line with what's going in the world, right? I was mentioning a few minutes ago that I was attending this conference where I was amazed about the very mature participation of these high school students in the logistics of a conference of this magnitude. And then I read, you know, I get my phone news dispatches, and I read about the latest attack in a high school on Thursday, Thursday last week, right, in Saugus High School in California, which, you know, it just reminds me that we need to continue pressing for common sense legislation to control the, how people have access to guns. But in that school, there was no safe entrance. Doors were automatically sliding open and closed depending on who wanted to come in and exit. There were no guards, no cameras. And that, what I liked, felt completely strange to our experience here in the United States. Hopefully, we will move into scenarios like those soon. But we still need to work hard on that. I was thinking that we need to continue working with, because we're already doing it, but we need to continue working with strategic alliances with other actors around the school district. And I'm thinking in the community college and the university. And together with them, thinking about K-424 educational processes rather than in segments. What does that mean? I don't know. But if we keep the beneficiaries in mind in the first place, then that should not be a problem. Those are structures that can be modified or, you know, strategically conjoined. I'm thinking about the larger context of Wisconsin and the Midwest. I'm thinking, is the common core enough of a challenge to our students? Can we look at other scenarios or projects? I have suggested many times considering the International Baccalaureate Program as one of those models to look at. That could, that should certainly be part of, could certainly be a part of a growth initiative. And the IB program goes for all the levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Are we having an idea of what are we going to do with our 4K education? Is that a way that we want to go deliberately before we're told that we have to go? We need to close the achievement gap. That's not right a choice. We have, I mean, we don't have a choice not to do it. We have to do it. And that should be high in our priorities. And then how are we going to move towards a growth model, intellectual growth model, rather than just, you know, measuring academic achievement? So those are the kind of things that I was thinking in what kind of educational services would we be offering? And there are much more. But I guess that as we push the conversation with our staff and our team of principals and the community around the district with parents, of course, then more questions, more ideas will arise. That's what I wanted to share with you. So we've been talking for about an hour now. So how about we look at possible timelines of a possible referendum project?
So I think that, Med, if you can put the slides up, I think part of your discussion, part of your discussion will, and part of your decision-making will be determined by the scope of the referendum. And also, perhaps by, there's been a lot of discussion about the debt drop-off and that idea of doing something before that is finalized. That last debt payment will be in October 2020. So if you look at, let's see, how do I do this, Med, to get back to, to... This one. So there is a possibility that you could do a referendum in 350 days. There has been quite a bit of discussion about the needs of Roosevelt and the needs of South. Those needs were deferred from the discussions in 2015 and 16. I think with the assurances to those school committees that as soon as the debt dropped off, the district would start moving in the direction of making those updates. There's been quite a bit of work by Demo and Trends. In 2016, I think we had about a, I think it was about twenty million dollars for the updates to South and about two, 2.5 million for the updates to Roosevelt. There's going to be some additions to those costs because of, you know, it'll be, you know, four years since that took place. So I think you're probably looking at something between 25 and 30 million dollars in terms of this kind of referendum. It would be a very focused referendum. It would bring you some short-term results that, and I think it would maybe fulfill the promises that other boards made. You would have to have a budget development report and recommendations sometime at the end of January, in that last January meeting. February 2020, the board would have to approve a timeline for the referendum. By August 2020, you would have to adopt your resolution and certify to the municipalities what your question's going to be. And then in the fall general election, November 3rd, you could go to that referendum vote. There's a lot of work to be done, but in this particular case, a lot of work has been done. It's already, the preparation work has already been completed. And I think the community, maybe not as a whole, is up to date on the needs of Roosevelt and South, but certainly those communities are. And I think they would help us in that area. This is doable if the board decides to take it on because so much of the work has already been completed. So that's option one for you. Option two takes you to the election in, I'll check these timelines. Yes, April 5, 2021. This could, I, you know, would suppose be, have a broader scope based on some of the discussions that you've had tonight, maybe based on some of your visioning. Typically, a referendum like this, you would spend some time going out into the Typically, a referendum like this, you would spend some time going out into the community, gauging other needs, narrowing down a focus. Any construction work that you started would not begin until summer of twenty twenty-two, whereas with the other one, you could probably begin construction sometime in twenty twenty-one, particularly since so much of the prep work's been done. I mean, you know, we have a very good idea of what the designs would be. Some of that work would be just ready to go to bed if the referendum passed in the first scenario. With this one, it would be a little bit more depending on your scope. And then your third option is to go for the seven hundred and thirty days, which puts construction out to twenty twenty-two. And again, you can see what the key, you know, timeframes that you have to meet, but you have some options depending on where you want to go as a board.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
So just for clarification, the first timeline would really only address Roosevelt and South. There really isn't time to do, and you mean South Middle School, so that really doesn't address the elementary school issue?
No, it doesn't. But what it does address are the, the things that were deferred from the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen discussion.
Right.
And it would take care of those two great needs that we know that we have in the district and must be addressed very soon.
Okay. But it doesn't solve that larger problem?
No, and you would then have, you know, you have approximately seven hundred and thirty days to plan another referendum if you chose to do so. And you'd have more input at that point in terms of what the next biennial budget would look like and what could be taken care out of your capital improvement plan and other needs that you might have, technology needs, that kind of thing, which is what we dealt with in the last referendum.
The, the downside, though, is that you're going to referendum twice in, what, two, three years?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's, that's a hard balance. Do you, do you do that, or do you take the time to do one big one? Is one big one harder to sell than one, two smaller ones? I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Commissioner Harder?
Yeah, I certainly don't know the answer either to one big one or one small one. It seems, though, that the amounts, it'd be interesting to see if we could calculate out the, they could be paid off at different rates. Let's say we did the short one with South and Roosevelt. It would, it's still to be determined what our plan would be for, oh, it's a fifteen-year debt or whatever. Is, is that my, am I right about that? Could, and we have some flexibility in terms of whether it's a five-year or fifteen-year or three-year? Is there?
Yeah, I think that would be part of the conversation of, you know, looking at the big picture of all of the debt and are there some more drops that make sense to structure the payments at certain points in time? Again, to, the goal would be to keep that tax levy flat for debt service.
Yes.
And so I think you'd have to look strategically, the big picture of the debt that we have out there. I think currently our debt is anticipated to be paid off in twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. So you'd be very strategic about, maybe you front-load larger payments now because of that debt drop, and then look at how does that go forward? We would rely on help from outside consultants to help us do that just because they have a much better handle on that. We can, I could show you the big picture, but I would use their expertise to kind of help us strategically place where we would want those payments to fall. And do you front-load them or do you back-load them as well?
Yeah, thank you. That's exactly the kind of thing I was thinking about is, you know, how can we pace these in such a way that we maintain a kind of a consistency of the, of the tax levy, but also a contin, you know, to be able to cover the immediate needs that we know we have, but also have a plan for, for dealing with those, some longer-term needs related to the visioning and, and other things? So, actually, just one follow-up question. Is it, so, but in terms of the amount that we're talking about, I don't know if you know the answer to this, or even have an opinion, but the amounts that we're talking about for, for Roosevelt and, and South, to look at those as being, they're, the debt drop-off of that thing somehow being something that we can tie our next referendum to, or those would have to be much further out than, than that? You know, if we're talking about a seven hundred and thirty-day referendum, for example, can we talk about that, that sec, if we do a, a two-phase referendum, can we talk about that second one kicking in just as the first one is dropping off, or is it going to take much longer for that first one to drop off?
I want to make sure I'm clear. Is the question when the debt would drop off, or is the question the referendum would drop off?
When, when the, what, the concern is keeping that tax amount fairly stable. And so if we structure the first one, how much control do we have over when it goes away as a, assuming it passes? How much control do we have over structuring it so that, oh, well, we know that's going to drop off in, could we say it would drop off in twenty twenty-two and, in which we would plan to introduce another?
We would have lots of control over that, and that's why I would recommend, you know, a bigger discussion with, you know, the bond people, just because they can help provide scenarios for us and look at what kind of payments could we afford for principal and interest to help keep that levy flat? And they would also recommend you maybe want to borrow the funds for ten years or fifteen years or twenty years. They're going to look at the interest rates, they're going to look at, you know, again, help us keep that tax levy flat, and they're much more knowledgeable in that area than I am. And so I would say if we had specific questions, we would reach out to them and ask them for some guidance and some options and give you something to react to as the full board because you definitely would have lots of control over that. It's just, you know, kind of, we talk about the levers. Which levers do we move to?
There'd be too many options right now. Let's narrow it down a little.
It could be. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Nordine?
So I'm sure that you all are tired of hearing me talk about South Side expansion at this point on the DEMO and Trends. I think, I agree with Commissioner Klinkhammer that looking at the, as a smaller one here in twenty twenty, and then coming back in, at least in this timeline, twenty twenty-one, that's two asks in two years as a, or in two elections, that's a one year. You know, it's a twenty twenty and then in twenty twenty-one. You know, one, I don't know that that sits well, you know, if I thought about it from a perspective of myself as a taxpayer, like the idea of, boy, they're asking me for more taxes every single year rather than, okay, they went in twenty sixteen, now they're here in twenty twenty-one, it's been five years, it's time to re-up our support. The other thing that would concern me is if we pushed back, if we did the, the twenty twenty for the, the two schools, which we absolutely need to do as soon as possible, and then we pushed back some sort of expansion for capacity. Last time we all had, saw Kim and Phil show us, you know, we're, especially at Meadowview right now, we, we saw some of our great students, and I have no doubt that the principal and the teachers at Meadowview are doing a fantastic job for those students. But I think about how much better they could be doing if we reduce the burden in a way that made it possible for all of those students to do better in different places. And, you know, we're already looking at, you know, construction on potentially a new school or add-ons, whatever we settle on for those things to happen in twenty twenty-two, which means maybe they're not going to school there until twenty twenty-four. And that means we're looking at four more years where it's ninety-five percent, and we know that that area, especially Meadowview's catchment, is a lot of growth happening, and they're, they just sold another lot for a bunch of apartments in that area right next to Action City. It's, it's coming. And so I, I feel a real strong sense of urgency to have that included as soon as possible so we can go, we can start to relieve the burdens that we have on the, the five schools that we talk about that we didn't kind of relieve with the boundary changes. So I, I think I would personally like to see that we just do one, and we try to do it for the things that we need, whether that's the spring, which I think makes more sense just because there's already election going on there as opposed to the fall. It's either way. I also, again, sorry to always be harping on DEMO and Trends, I think we can, either way, it seems like most of us are in agreement that there is a need to look at some sort of expansion of capacity on the South Side, and DEMO and Trends has been waiting for a go-ahead from us to, like, at least start planning that for whatever their timeline is, whether it's, we need this done by timeline so we can ask for referendum in the spring of twenty twenty-one, the fall, or twenty twenty-two. DEMO and Trends is ready to do that work, and I hope that's something that we could agree to tonight to say, yeah, just please go do that work, find us a recommended solution to that issue so that we can put it in the referendum whenever we decide that referendum would be.
I can, I, I, I agree with his, his points that are being made, and I do, I, I am concerned about, as I think I hear that you are, Commissioner Nordine, about a consistency of that tax level. I think I'm hearing that. Maybe it's not your top concern. I think the top concern of all of us is funding the district. So I, the detail of whether we let the tax drop off and let perhaps expectations drop off as well as to what it costs to support public schools in this city, that's, to me, the risk. I don't know how big that risk is. I, I have no means of really assessing it, but it concerns me that if, you know, if we have an opportunity to keep it level, all other things being equal, I think that's, it's, I think it's a helpful, it's a helpful thing, but I, I don't think, I think keep our eyes on the prize, which is a successful referendum, so however we get there.
So I'm, I will try to gather, okay? We have three options, and it seems that whatever option we take, we would prefer it to be the most efficient process, meaning the most efficient would be the one that targets the most needs. As I was said, the, the largest number of, of needs. I also hear that the timeline number one, while doable, would somehow limit the number of needs to be targeted, which would leave the timeline two and timeline three as more desirable as they would be more efficient. But considering that we don't want to, we would prefer not to have a drop in the payments, looks like timeline two is more desirable in that aspect? Am I interpreting you well?
I think we heard at Budget Development that either timeline two or timeline three would have essentially the same effect on tax rates. It might be that timeline two, yeah, right? The levy would drop in twenty twenty, and then would, we would ask for it to be raised back up in twenty twenty-one, either, either on, either two or three?
Yeah, I think it was either two or three because the timing of the levy, we set the levy once in November, so if the referendum went in April and was successful, we would levy that following November. If you did a November referendum, we would levy in November as well. And so, yes, you're exactly right.
So there will be a drop in timeline two and three, right?
Well, there's, there's a debt to drop next year, so the tax levy and debt service for twenty twenty-one will go down unless, you know, strategically, something else would be done, and then it would go back up based upon the timelines that were presented here in, in November twen, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-one. That levy would change for that next year. So right now, where we're at is there would be a drop in the twenty twenty-one tax levy that we set, basically a year from now, November of twenty-one. And then, then depending on a referendum is successful, then you'd levy again in November. The levies are a little bit confusing because they're levied on a calendar year basis, not on our fiscal, so I always have to stop and think about the dates. So pardon my hesitation on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. So would you consider that the timeline two of five hundred and five days would be the most preferable? Because timeline two indicates that construction may begin in the summer of twenty-two, but so does timeline three. Construction will begin at the same, the same summer of twenty twenty-two, right? Am I reading it correctly?
Yes, you are reading that correctly. The reason for that is because...
Students are in session.
Correct.
Yeah.
And when you, you know, we like to do our projects and bid them out in January, February, and March, and so you can't predict that before that timeline.
And, and that is fine, but, yes, Dr. Hardbeck?
Additionally, you haven't defined the scope of the referendum. So depending on how many projects you had, how many buildings were involved, how much design work had to be done, it could even be pushed out a little bit longer.
Meaning the sum, later than summer twenty twenty-two? For some of them.
Mm-hmm.
Thinking about the, thinking about how could we more, how can, how could we be more, the most efficient possible? Because putting together the envisioning process simultaneously with the next, the planning and execution of, of a referendum, it will require a lot of work and consistency. Would you, would you like to this, would you like to decide which one tonight?
We have a notice.
I know. We, would you like to continue the conversation about that, about those lines tonight so that we can include the item for a formal decision the earliest possible? Because we are running against time, even if we do it in timeline two. So what is, how do you feel? Do you think we need to discuss more? Or would you be ready to formally adopt the decision when we formally call for a meeting to make this decision? Dr. Beaker?
So I want to consider the possibility that maybe two referenda could actually be most efficient. And I think a, a big part of this is information about voter behavior, right? Voter behavior in general, you know, how people behave typically, but then also maybe voter behavior that could be unique to Eau Claire. You know, both are operating there. But, I mean, we know that in general, referenda in Wisconsin, the vast majority are passing, and that's typical voter behavior. I would like to know a little bit more about districts that have had back-to-back referenda, and what is happening in those districts? And are they similar to us or different from us? Because there, there could be an efficiency to having two back-to-back. I don't want to say, I don't want to call that yet inefficient. Do you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So that, I would like to continue the conversation, and that's something I would, I, a little more time to think about is the voter behavior piece.
May I ask a question? What do you mean by back-to-back?
Well, um...
Two, two years?
Yeah, a Roosevelt, South Middle School only, or, and followed by the South Side expansion.
So that will be twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three?
I, I don't know the ordering. It might depend on the DEMO and Trends. I, I don't know. I'd say loosely, back-to-back. I'm using the term loosely.
So one, one of the things to keep in mind as you look at these timelines, these timelines are predicated on the idea that you would make a decision sometime in the early winter as to the scope of the referendum. The timelines you could see... as to the scope of the referendum. The timelines you could set with some variation. These are only examples.
So we could approve a timeline in February of 2020, in July of 2020, or February of 2021? That's what you said, right? Okay, so we have time to do that voter behavior research, certainly. And perhaps going back again to my suggestion earlier tonight, it would be wise for us to go ahead and block time for a, to do again what we're doing right now in early February? Would that give us enough time to do the research and come more, better informed for that decision? Commissioner Klinkhammer?
One question I had is the choice between timeline two or timeline three. Is that, I mean, that might be dictated to some degree by what demo and trends recommendation is, I would think. If they come back and say, okay, here's what we found is the best solution, I can, I can think of, you know, given, given what they might come up with, we might say, okay, we have plenty of time to do that in timeline two. Or given what they come up with, you know, if it's building a new elementary school, that's a bigger conversation, I think, in this community and we may want that timeline three, that extra time to be able to have those conversations. You know, part of what you had talked about was this referendum is a tool for how we're going to educate these children. So do we need to have the time to switch the conversation? Because I don't think referendums right now are about how we educate the children. They're about how taxpayer money is being spent. And so I can see a situation where if that's the recommendation, we may want all that. So I, I think we're a little premature kind of deciding maybe which timeline we're going, going with. I also echo Dr. Bika's question about voter behavior. I think that's such a tricky thing. Yes, referendums are passing, but we could be one that doesn't, you know, I mean, frankly, if we're doing that. I mean, it's a, it's an unpredictable sort of thing. I do think, however, though, that most people will not sort of have a, it, it will be a blip on the radar, I think, if your property tax drops one year and then goes back. I don't know that everybody's going to connect those things in a way that would be, oh, my, it's down this year, so I'm voting no on the, you know, I just don't think people are gonna, it's gonna be, we need to make it about that broader conversation of this is how we're educating our children, not your property tax goes back up this year. So those are my thoughts. I just, I think we might need a little more time to make the decision about these timelines.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, Dr. Nordean?
So I also appreciate both what Commissioners Bika and Klinkhammer have just said. I think, and it sounds like we have time to think more about timeline and at the, not so much risk as certainty of being a broken record, can we put demo and trends to work on this issue tonight and just tell them, please go do work, just kind of like we did for the Budget Committee?
That's what you're doing, actually. We, you didn't wait for us to tell you what to do.
I mean, that's fine. I, as long as we could, as long as we can put these people up to work that are excited to, to get that work done for us, I'll take it any way we can get it, by coercion or not.
Well, we will encourage you to do that.
Okay, so I have just-
Yes, Commissioner Harder?
One brief comment, which I do have this concern and it is a bit of a nebulous concern about, about that tax drop off. I think the way you frame it is convincing about, well, who cares? It's a question.
Well, it's not that people don't care, but I think they, I think their memory is short enough where they're not going to go, oh.
Yeah. I, I, I think there may be a point to that. My other concern, though, that I would raise is just the timing of the Roosevelt and South needs and how long they've waited. And when we, if we shunt them into a timeline three or a time, timeline two or a timeline three, what are we doing to, to those schools? And as long as we're answering that question with eyes open and in a way that we all agree, I'll be happy with where we land.
So thinking in February, when is our earliest meeting in February?
The third.
The third of February? Okay. Do you think on that day we could have a work session to continue this conversation? Yes, we should be ready with enough information to make a decision.
And does that leave us enough time to potentially do timeline two? Or, because I just see February 2020 is a date of, for approving a timeline, for, for the timeline two.
For timeline one.
Sorry, that, pardon me. The time, exactly right, timeline one.
So I would just say if you're going to make decisions, it shouldn't be in the venue of work session. You should have your committee reports earlier and then be prepared to maybe deal with it as an individually considered resolution.
On February the third.
Yes.
Are we all good with that? Good. So it will be. The last point in the agenda is discussion on elements of coherent governance model presented at September 25, 2019 work session. Any idea or suggestions as to what you want to do with what we heard about the coherent governance model? Do you want to continue the conversation? Do you want to have a, well, we, we, you have reviewed the, the book that was distributed. Do you have any commentaries? Do you see it useful?
Yes, Commissioner Harder?
Sure, I have some, I have an opinion to share, but, which is, I, I see this, and I guess I've said it before, but I see this coherent governance, one, as a very appealing idea, and two, as a continuum that, as far as I've heard, nobody has reached the far end of and maybe nobody ever will. And maybe that's good. Maybe that's right, that it's happening that way. But that, thinking of it as for us as, as not a black and white, but as shades of gray. And what does our journey along that path look like? And do we feel optimistic, optimistic enough about what we've heard and what we've read to commit to taking some steps down that path and, and see where it leads us? That's the way I see this, more than a, okay, we're going to do coherent governance. That, doing it means we're committed to evolving in that direction, in my view, but maybe there's, maybe there's a more radical perspective we could take on this too.
Anyone else with a strong opinion about coherence governance model route? Commissioner Bika?
I guess I'd, I'd appreciate Dr. Hardabek's opinions. When you think about this model from a superintendent perspective, I was trying to think about what's, there, thinking about superintendents, there are a couple spots in the text that I really question and I, I would value your opinion. One, it talks about how if a, if a superintendent is the person who carries the vision for the district, that vision can go when, if the superintendent goes. And it's the board to carry the vision. So that's a point that's emphasized. Another thing, they talk about how coherent governance can be a really freeing environment for a skilled, competent CEO superintendent, but an oil and water situation for a CEO who lacks competence and competence to the, to do the job, free of board approvals and so on. So I, what do you see as advantages or disadvantages of this model from the superintendent perspective? What would draw someone to want to be a superintendent in a district that governs this way? And then I think about what would, for board members, how this matches, why you feel people are drawn to serve on school boards? I mean, it's, it's different in some ways and I, it might change who's interested. I don't know.
Well, in terms of the, the vision piece of it, I think the, it has to be a shared vision. And I think one of the things that has been strong about our vision in Eau Claire, about that vision for post-secondary success that we started with, is that we've been able to build on it in ways that have drawn in other people, other organizations, other people in the community. We saw that at the chamber on Friday, their commitment to our vision. So I think it does have to be a shared vision. And the way that we got to this vision was through many, many community meetings and surveys and focus groups and talking with staff. And so I, I think as long as that process is preserved and it's revisited, I don't think it becomes one person's vision. And I don't think that any school district can operate on one person's vision. It has to be a shared vision, not only with the staff and, but with the community as well. So for that piece of it, I don't know. Does that answer your question or?
And it does. I guess thinking about the desirability or undesirability, so of a new superintendent, you know, coming into a district that has a model like this, how, you know, what are advantages of thinking about that person or disadvantages? Because that's of course right in the forefront.
Well, I think it's, it, some of it depends on how far the district is, as Erin said, on, in your journey, you know, toward this model. I think the appealing thing for it, and I would think also not only for superintendents, but for board members as well, is the role clarification that this model provides. And it's very clear who does what. I think also from a superintendent's perspective, having those monthly reports that are on various aspects of the superintendent's performance, they're tied more to the results of the school district rather than the personality, you know, or the, kind of those little inner, you know, personal relationships that happen from time to time. So I think that's appealing, you know, for anyone who's being evaluated, is that you're, you're evaluated on results. So I think in, in that perspective, it's, it's helpful. Kind of like the superintendent knows what his or her job is and the board members know what his or her job is, you know? So that has an appealing piece to it. In terms of the capabilities of a superintendent, I think that goes into your search and whether or not you can meet, find someone who meets your qualifications and meets the kind of person that you're looking for and the kind of person that the community and the staff are looking for. You have, you know, shared that they're looking for a strong collaborator, they're looking for a strong communicator, they're looking for someone with outreach to the community, someone who wants to innovate. You know, I think finding those qualities would fit into any governance structure if that's the value that matches what the board's looking for. So some of that would be on the success of your search. And I, you know, I think that there is an interest in Wisconsin about coherent governance. You know, we're seeing more people studying that. And a lot of it has to do with superintendent turnover because the average superintendent, I think, is like less than three years. So, and the average ten, or the average experience level of a superintendent is coming down, 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 down as well. So, you know, that all plays into it.
So what should be our next step? Would you like more training on this? From a consultant or would you like to have a conversation with board, another board that is implementing it?
So Altoona is receiving training in this model. I think Chippewa Falls went to this model a couple of years ago. So they're right in our area. Might, you know, you might have some conversation with, with board members to see what their perspective is. I think it's a difficult model to, to kind of get a handle on unless you hear some very specific examples that are attached to the questions that you have. In other words, how does this work and what does it look like?
Would you like me to reach out to these two or other districts to see if they would find the time to meet with us? I don't know, well, the formality would be, would be a work session?
Could be.
A work session, a joint work session? I don't know if that exists, but if it doesn't, we'll create it to understand better what they're doing so that we can make a decision? Is that okay with you? Yes? Okay, then I'll pursue that. I'll request your support on that. Okay, great. Thank you very much. So we have discussed these four items in one hour 41 minutes. Is there anything else that you would like to discuss or connections amongst Hearing none, I am going to assume that you've, you feel satisfied with the conversation that you've received direction clear enough to move forward and that we will continue the conversation in this work session environment on our first meeting in February. But in that meeting, we'll have to make a decision about a timeline. And to go, to be able to do that, we have to include this item in the report, committee reports, before we break into a committee session. Okay? So if that understanding is clear, then we'll, we'll close the session in that note. Is that okay? So I would request items for a future agenda. Hearing none, I think we meet tomorrow, right, for agenda? Okay, so we'll meet tomorrow at eight o'clock and I would like to receive a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved?
Moved to adjourn the meeting by Dr. Nordean.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Harder. Those who, I agree, please say aye. Those who oppose, the same sign.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.